Good evening, everyone. This is Teri Caldwell Johnson. I'm sitting in for Board Chair DeWanna Bradley, who has joined us by phone this evening. And we're actually waiting for at least one other board member. But in the interest of time and trying to stay on schedule, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Tonight, we wanted to just provide our board an opportunity to get up to speed on DMTRS and where we are. We'll have at least three representatives from the DMTRS board that will be speaking. And then we'll also have Kathy McKay from the district provide the board with a presentation that really helps us to gain some historical perspective and background on DMTRS, as well as share a little bit about the scope of work that TCG is undertaking on behalf of the district as we try to identify some strategies that might help us to move the needle for our DMTRS active and retirees. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we will not be taking any action tonight. This is, of course, a work session. But I think that much of what we'll hear tonight will also allow the board to gain some clarity on where we are in terms of the timeline for TCG and their scope of work, but also how that also lines up with our budget process, recognizing that any shifts or changes that we'll be making or that would be considered would have to be part of our overall budget, since any changes are actual general fund expenditures. So that, we're going to spend about 90 minutes tonight. I'm going to try to keep us on a somewhat relatively short timeframe. And we'd also like to make sure that we set aside time for our board to ask questions. And we'll do sort of our typical round robin, two questions per member, then move to the next member. We'll do two rounds. And then if we feel like we need another round, we'll do that. I also want to make sure that we certainly provide Jessica and Barb, as well as Brad Becker, an opportunity to present. And I think we'll start with them. So Jessica, I think we'll go with you first. And then we'll go with you, Barb. And then we'll conclude with Brad Becker. And then after the three of you complete, we'll go to Kathy McKay. And if you could keep your comments to five to seven minutes, that'll help us keep things moving along. So Jessica, I'll turn it over to you.
This is a mic check. Can you hear me okay? Great. So hello, and thank you so much for inviting us to come and speak about DMTRS and the complicated and complex problem that we're trying to solve. I like to say that I have been part of Des Moines Public Schools since 1972, which, for those of you who are good at math, know that's 50 years. It also means that I started in kindergarten. Okay, so I've been with Des Moines Schools for a while. And I started as an employee in 1989. As an active member of the DMTRS retirement plan, I chose DMTRS when I was 21 years old. And at that time, it was a very good deal. It was better than IPRs in some ways because it was fully funded and it didn't have any liabilities, you know, unfunded liabilities. And so it seemed like a really good deal at the time. But what's happened over the past a little bit more than a decade now is that there has been some inequitable employer contributions between IPRs and DMTRS. Two people working the same job for the same number of years are not getting the same contributions to their retirement. And that's partly because of changes in the law that requires increases in contributions to IPRs. And DMTRS has not kept up in those contributions. So we have not been matched in those same contribution levels. So that's one problem. A second problem is the DMTRS investment strategies have to, must favor stability over growth because we have more than 800-some retirees and about a little over 100 actives. And so we need the stability to make sure that we can continue to pay for their pensions and their retirements. But that means that actives don't see the same returns in their investments that you can get with something with a bigger vehicle. Because, you know, IPRs is so much larger. It has so many more members. It can have a segment for real growth of the funds. But we don't have that with the MTRS just simply because of the way the demographics lay out. And then the third problem that we're trying to solve is that we need a really quick solution. Because this problem has been growing wider and wider. Because when it comes to investment, time matters. And the longer that we are underfunded in our contribution rates, the less time we have to gain, you know, the interest rates back. So the gap becomes wider and wider. So that by the time that I retire, someone who has started with Des Moines Schools like I have will not have the same or I will not have the same retirement package that they'll have simply because of those differences in contribution rates and in return rates. Just if that makes sense. The gap also varies from person to person because of the planned structure. So a one-size solution doesn't really work for everybody. Because I started with Des Moines Public Schools so young, my contribution rate from the employer is smaller than someone who started when they were older. That's just the way the plan is structured. And so that creates a really interesting and complex problem that we're trying to solve. So from the active point of view, there are three main problems: inequitable employer contributions, the investment strategies must favor stability over growth, which contributes to furthering the gap, and the need for a really quick solution to this problem because it has been going on for some time. And that lost time affects us on our investments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Barb?
Good evening. My name is Barb Caligan Mitchell, and I am a representative on the advisory committee representing the retirees and here to speak on their behalf tonight. I just want to start with saying that more than 20 years ago, there was a plan explored to transfer the entire membership of DMTRS to IPRs. And that proposal came close to happening, so much so that the plan administrator at the time sold a significant portion of the equities to facilitate that transfer. And then, as it happened, the cost of that was too high and the proposal was abandoned. So this whole issue has been going on for an awfully long time. I just think at this point, many retirees are very nervous and may not have a lot of faith in the district. I think that is due to several things that have transpired in the last, oh, five to seven years. The district has said that they want to get out of the retirement business. And our concern about that is, you know, we have a guaranteed benefit. And so what does that mean for our guaranteed benefit? The other issues that came up in the last five to seven years is just when the most recent effort to move actives to IPRs with their account balances, and there was a cost of an extra $15 million that IPRs required. And retirees believe that that outlay of money from the DMTRS plan was not proportional to the numbers of people that were going to be moving and therefore was unfair, and felt that that move to IPRs would have taken some of our plan assets. And then there was a lawyer that represented us and successfully made our case. And then a second reason the merger could not go forward at that time was that the DMTRS plan lawyer, his name was Mark Bierman, he believed that money couldn't be taken from the plan because it left the plan not fully funded. And that was in violation. And that whole process took months of study and just left people with uncertainty. And then finally, at a board meeting in October, it was announced that the IPRs merger would not go forward. Another point that's extremely important for retirees is our excess earnings, which amounts to a few hundred dollars extra, depending on how the plan funding comes out every year. And, you know, we've also had to work really hard to keep that benefit or to get that benefit. There were two years where that money was paid out inaccurately. And again, an attorney was engaged, and then the district did make good on their error. But I think at that point in time, retirees felt like maybe that money was being held back to have more assets in the plan to help the actives move to IPRs at the time. Excess earnings now are a part of the plan, and we really would want to keep it that way. As Jessica said, with the rule of 88 for IPRs starting in 1996, DMTRS and IPRs members were compensated at different rates. And as of 2018, the district contributes 9.44% for IPRs employees. And then the range for DMTRS, depending on their age of joining the district, is 4.83% to 8%. If a person joined at age 59, then their contribution is 8%. So with 800 retirees and 150 actives, this was a cost-saving to the district. The actives want to be made whole, and we do understand that and support that. But the retirees are living with not being made whole. We have a much smaller benefit than our coworkers in IPRs. And just a common illustration of the difference is a monthly benefit check is $1,000 less per month or more than an IPRs counterpart with the same number of years in the district. We often hear, "You made the choice." And when we made the choice, as Jessica also said, DMTRS was said to be a better plan. We didn't foresee what IPRs would become or that the district would be making less of a contribution to DMTRS members than they were to IPRs members. So I think we just have questions. Is the goal of the study to make suggestions to improve the plan or to take over administration of the plan? I think taking over the administration concerns retirees. What would happen to the guarantee from the district that our earned retirement benefit would be there as long as the employee was still living? In the proposal, they state that they would endeavor to terminate the plan and provide a guaranteed lifetime benefit. Would this equal or exceed what we're currently guaranteed? That's another question we have. And then the rate at which Des Moines Public Schools can fund DMTRS members is lower than for those in IPRs relative to their retirement. And how does the district plan to deal with that for active and retired members of DMTRS? Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. I think our next speaker is Brad.
Hi. I can keep my comments short because I think Jessica and Barb's comments should be kind of the emphasis or the focus to start here. But introduce myself. I'm the citizen member of the committee. I've been with this group for, just trying to keep track, seven or eight years now. In my day job, I'm an investment risk actuary at Principal. So always happy to help out with this plan. As we heard from the opening comments, you know, this is a complex retirement plan. It's been around for a long time. It's historically performed pretty comparably with IPRs over its long history. But it's come across some significant headwinds over the last decade and a half, resulting in, you know, kind of a divergence in retirement income results when you're comparing IPRs members to DMTRS members. You know, we've seen, you know, poor results for recent retirees and poor prospects for active members. There are a couple of things that have driven that. Maybe to give some kind of technical background, as you're all aware, interest rates have been historically low for the last decade and a half. And lower interest rates generally means lower returns on fixed income portfolios. To kind of compensate for that, what you saw over the last 15, 20 years is most public pension plans have pivoted to asset classes that are potentially riskier. But, you know, through favorable economic conditions and good markets, they've outperformed fixed income investments handily. Thinking like private equity hedge funds, infrastructure, things outside of the realm of normal corporate bonds or treasury bonds, things like that. And DMTRS, I think, had good reasons not to kind of make that pivot. You've got a smaller group of members and a smaller tax base over which to spread that investment risk. Just thinking, comparing to IPRs, you've got the entire state and a large group of, you know, plan members to spread that risk over. But DMTRS, when it comes to pension plans, isn't that large. And so it's hard to get comfortable with, you know, a small plan with a smaller tax base to pile on investment risk. So, you know, justification for those decisions historically. But the results haven't been there. And the comparison to IPRs has been poor. The other headwind we're facing with this plan is demographics. As a proportion of retirees in the plan has continued to rise, active members are going to have a harder time accumulating benefits because more funds have to go towards supporting guaranteed payments to people that retired when rates were higher. And so we're investing new money now into a lower-rate environment. And that's not going to be enough to support a higher guaranteed payment that somebody who retired 20 years ago, for example, is going to be getting. And as Barb called out, the excess earnings is a great feature if you're a retiree and it pays out for you. But it does make it really hard for active members to kind of accumulate, you know, higher guaranteed benefit payments in the future. Because any great years in investment, you're going to be siphoning off some of those excess returns and paying them out to retirees. Again, a great feature for the retirees that rely on that. It's an important part of their plan benefit. But for the active members, it can sort of feel like they're subsidizing the retirees' benefit. And that's just due to the complex design of this plan. Again, if you were to have actuaries draw up a new plan from scratch to reflect the realities of today, it would look nothing like this plan. This is a really weird plan that has come across a set of circumstances that resulted in really poor results for retirees in the near term and in the future. So I think our goal has been for the last several years to find a solution that will improve the likelihood that active members will have sufficient income replacement in retirement, while continuing to look for ways to improve investment returns for the retired members to support their benefits and hopefully continue to pay out good excess returns to them. So that's all of my comments. I'll be around for a little bit longer, but I do have to go watch my kids in a little bit. So any questions you might have for me on the technical parts of the plan, please let me know. Otherwise, happy to listen into the discussion.
Thank you, Brad. Maybe before you're required to leave, if there are any board members either in person or on the line, and I think we have both DeWanna Bradley and Jackie Norris, who have tuned in virtually, and then, of course, Jenna Knox, Ken Martorano, and myself, Teri Caldwell Johnson, in the room. But if there are any questions specific for Brad, I would open the floor for anyone that has any Brad questions. If not, we'll go to Kathy McKay, and then we'll open it up to questions of all of our presenters tonight. Anybody have any questions specifically for Brad?
Will we be hearing from the consulting firm that Tom and Shashank were working with?
We will not be hearing from them tonight. Kathy McKay is prepared to give us an update on where they are. The DMTRS meeting tomorrow that we'll get an update on. But I think at this point, the timeline for Phase 1 is closer to completion in April, if I'm not mistaken. But I'll defer to Kathy on that.
And I could stick around for Kathy's presentation as well in case that spurs any questions that I need to address.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it. So if there aren't any questions specifically for Brad, I think I will ask Kathy McKay then, who's our district representative tonight, to share a presentation that really helps us to put the MTRS into context, helps us to understand a little bit about the history, the difference between the two plans, and then other information that might help the board to get up to speed on this topic. So, but before I go to Kathy, Dr. Aheart, I know that you are on the line. Is there anything that you'd like to share before we go to Kathy's presentation?
Thank you, Vice Chair Caldwell Johnson. I do want to just reemphasize that for about the last eight years, we have been trying to take systematic steps toward bringing the issues that were so well illustrated by Ms. Mitchell and Ms. Gogarty and Mr. Becker. This is a confounding situation. We've taken a bunch of steps to try to rectify this. We've engaged with TCG simply because they have a tremendous amount of experience in public sector pension plans. And frankly, for no lack of trying, we've not been able to come up with a solution to this challenge that is both fiscally responsible for the district and responsive to the needs of our DMTRS members, both actives and retirees. So I want to just emphasize that I know that the board and administration want nothing more than to satisfy everyone. And we want to make this work. And clearly, thus far, we don't have a solution. So I appreciate everyone taking their time to contribute their thinking, their experiences, and answering questions that the board may have so that we can bring this to resolution sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Dr. Aheart. With that, we will go to Kathy McKay. Kathy, if you'd like to introduce yourself. I'm not for sure all of the board members know you. Audio? I don't think, can you get? I think we can hear you in the room, but if they are on...
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, that's better.
Hi, I'm Kathy McKay. I'm the Director of Employee Services in the Business and Finance Department for Des Moines Schools. And I've been with Des Moines Schools for about 22 years. Been with the Human Resources and Business and Finance Department and working as part of, with the plan. And today, I want to go over just some plan history for you, walk you through kind of where we are today and how we got to where we are, and then some steps moving forward. The Des Moines Teachers Plan was adopted in 1953, which is coincidentally the same year that IPRs was adopted. It was adopted as an alternative...
Is there a question?
This is Jackie Norris. I'm just wondering if there's a presentation that we're supposed to be seeing.
I can see it on my screen.
Yes, I see it on my screen.
I can see it on my screen.
I guess I'm special. Okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
If not, Jackie, let us know.
I don't have it. If somebody can email me it, otherwise I'll look at it afterwards. Sorry for the interruption.
Yep, I think I sent it as an attachment to an email early, late last night.
Okay.
So if you want to pull down that email, you should have it.
Thank you.
Sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Des Moines Teachers was devised as an alternative to IPRs. There's $240 million in assets currently as of June 30 of 2021. We have 840 retirees, 296 actives. And within those 296 actives, 151 are actively employed. And that gets a little confusing sometimes. We talk about active actives and inactive actives. So anybody who has not initiated their retirement benefits is technically considered an active. So there are people who have left the district and have not initiated their benefits. And then there are 151 people who are still actively employed and contributing to the plan. Just a little comparison on Des Moines Teachers and IPRs. Both plans have both employer and employee contributions. Des Moines Teachers is somewhat unique in that the contributions to the plan are age-based. And Jessica alluded to and discussed that a little bit in her opening remarks about the age that you enter the plan determines your contributions. IPRs is considered a defined benefit plan. While the Des Moines Teachers is considered a hybrid plan. It acts as a defined contribution plan until the time of retirement, when it then becomes an annuitized benefit more like a defined benefit plan. The IPRs plan is portable, meaning if I am a teacher coming into Des Moines Schools, teaching, and I leave Des Moines Schools and I go to one of the suburbs, the IPRs plan moves with me or the Des Moines Teachers Plan is specific to Des Moines Teachers. IPRs also has an earnings restriction following retirement. So if I were to retire under IPRs and begin collecting my benefit, there's a restriction on how much I can earn in subsequent years if I go under IPRs-covered employment. Des Moines Teachers does not have that restriction. Des Moines Teachers also allows individuals to take their benefit out at retirement in a lump sum where IPRs does not have that option. Those are just a few of the key differences. There's also been some discussion that you've heard from members about contribution rates and that they're not the same. And that is a truth. Those contributions are not the same. Contributions are age-rated based on the age at plan entry for Des Moines Teachers. And I provided an example here for you. Over 24-year-old joining the plan in 2006, this is what they would have seen when they enrolled. The IPRs contribution for the employee was 3.7% and for the employee was 5.75%. In comparisons of Des Moines Teachers, an employee contribution was 4.4%. And the Des Moines Teachers employer contribution was 4.93%. So you'll see that the Des Moines Teachers contribution back in 2006 was less than it is for IPRs. The plan contributions have never been the same between the two plans. There's also been some discussion about plan contribution changes and how IPRs has made contribution plan changes. And Des Moines Teachers has not necessarily kept up with those. So I wanted to just illustrate here a little bit what those contribution changes have looked like. I gave you a history back to 2007 of... So for an example, in 2007, IPRs increased the employee contribution by 0.2% and the employer by 0.3%. Des Moines Teachers did the same. You'll notice that kind of, they went the same until 2011. In 2011, IPRs made a pretty significant change to their rate structure. And then at that time, they implemented a rule that said that they could increase rates by 1% a year without having to go back to membership and to legislation to have those changed. So they made some changes. You'll see in the right-hand columns. Then Des Moines Teachers made some change in the following years. And then I gave you a total increase at the bottom so you can see the difference in rates. And while, yes, Des Moines Teachers' rates did not increase quite to the extent of the IPRs' rates, I just wanted to point out that there were some changes made to those rates along the way. Additionally, IPRs made some changes. When they made that large rate change in 2011, then they said, effective 2012, we're going to make some changes to our plan as well. They changed the vesting rules. They went from a four-year vesting to a seven-year vesting. They made a change in the early retirement reduction percentage. And I will note that that was not to the favor of the retiree. They changed to the five high years of service. It was three years average. And they put in new reduction rules that applied to service years earned after July 1 of 2012. Des Moines Teachers has also made a couple of changes. In December of 18, we added the lump sum distribution option, allowing retirees to manage their own individual investment options rather than doing an annuitized benefit. And that change was made at the request of our membership. Also, in July of 2020, we did close Des Moines Teachers Plan to new entrants. Another thing that has been talked about is the Des Moines Teachers Investment Policy. The board approved the investment policy effective in June 2020. And I listed here the investment structure. 0 to 10 can be in cash. 16% to 90% of the portfolio can be fixed income. And 10% to 30% can be equities. That change, we changed 10% to 30% in equities. It used to be a maximum of 20%. So that was approved by the advisory committee and recommended to the board for approval. Again, Jessica, I think, said it very eloquently that this plan has to favor stability. And we've made some changes to be a little bit more aggressive in our portfolio. But again, we have to keep in mind our total population. And sometimes, the needs of the retirees and the needs of the actives conflict a little bit.[1793.18] Although we've had a very conservative investment structure, according to some, the funding of our plan has been very well. The Des Moines Plan is fully funded, which means that the assets are adequate to cover the liabilities. We're over 100% funded currently. And the IPRs funding ratio as of the end of FY '21 is 88%. So that speaks to the health of the plan of Des Moines Teachers. We've take, over the last years, we've taken several steps in Des Moines Teachers to try to look at some different options. One that you've heard talked about was the transition of looking at moving our Des Moines Teachers retirees over to IPRs. And we talked about doing that, moving them over so they would have their credit for their years of service. That was a couple-year process. We met with IPRs Administration to talk through what that might look like. There was a lot of data sharing between IPRs and Des Moines Schools. There was an actuarial study. It required a legislative change in order for us to be able to even consider moving to IPRs. And then there was numerous participant meetings and retiree meetings to discuss the outcome of that. With that, also came many challenges. As Barb talked about, there were some retiree concerns. There was concerns whether we could use plan funds. There was concerns what that would do to their excess earnings. There was concerns about the overall funding of the plan. There were some data concerns with IPRs. And just lots of different manipulations of data. IPRs looks at service in quarters. Des Moines Schools looks at service in years. And so to break that all out into different usable data for IPRs was a big challenge. IPRs also had some exclusions. They would not allow us to move everybody who was a current Des Moines Teachers participant over to IPRs. So there were certain individuals that they excluded. Mainly, those individuals were people who had what they call a quadro, which is a qualified domestic relations order. It occurs during a divorce where the spouse has split the assets of Des Moines Teachers. And because that's a legal agreement between Des Moines Teachers, IPRs would not allow those people to move over. So there were some exclusions. And then lastly, the funding piece was the biggest challenge. Without being able to use plan assets, any money that we moved into IPRs had to come from general fund. And when we first began this process, that number was around 11 million and grew to 17 million by the end of the process because IPRs changed their assumptions. So they went from a discount rate of 7.5% to 7%, which increased the amount of money that was required on behalf of Des Moines Schools. So ultimately, we decided that that was not a feasible option at that time. The Advisory Committee of Des Moines Teachers has been very committed to improving this plan. They've put in a lot of work, a lot of hours, and a lot of passion into trying to find solutions. We've updated the investment policy to try to get the most return we can while still being fiscally responsible. And they've made a proposal to increase the employer contribution to the plan and fund it through either the plan or through a supplemental retirement plan. That supplemental retirement plan could be a 457-401A, similar to what many people would think of like a 401K, where the district would put money in and the employee could put money in outside of the Des Moines Teachers Plan and allow the participant to have some choice in their investment and be managers of their own funds. This would allow for them to have a little bit more say and be a little bit more aggressive in those funds than we can be within the plan. After, we had looked at that proposal. We also talked to TCG, which is Trusted Capital Group. They're a firm out of Texas. They're pension plan experts. And they're currently working on a study for some plan recommendations. They've broken down their work into two phases. One is to deal more with the active group of employees. And another is to deal more with the retiree portion. Phase one is the active group. They've begun to, begun their work on that piece. They're going to develop a model to do some different pension modeling and look at different income replacement levels. And they hope to have their first draft of that model to us by the end of February. Once we get that draft, it will take us some time to work through different assumptions and look at different things. And we're, hopefully, we're targeting a later point in time within the next few months after that in order to have some recommendations for this group. I think tonight, some of the things that we wanted to further in our discussions is some considerations is the obligation to the plan participants with Des Moines Teachers. Yes, these individuals chose Des Moines Teachers as, as an option when they retired. But what is the district's obligation to them going forward? What are the financial resources that we're willing to commit on behalf of Des Moines Public Schools? And at what point do we say, you know, we've exhausted our options? These are the options on the table and we need to put this to rest? With that, I'd be willing to open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. So what I'd like to do, since this is a board work session, I'd like to open the floor for the board members who might have questions. And the questions can be posed to any of our presenters today. So Brad, Jessica, and Barb, as well as Kathy McKay. And we also have our CFO, Shashank Arora, here as well, who's been actively involved in this work as well as our superintendent. So I would open the floor to our board members who may have questions. And why don't I start in the room? Ms. Martorano, do you have any questions that come up immediately that you'd like to pose to any of our presenters?
Thank you to everyone that's presented. I appreciate your insight. Much of this information I received a couple months back. So I appreciate you sharing this with our new board members to get us all on a level playing field of knowledge. I look forward to having solutions presented. And that's really when I think most of my questions will come up, until we have something tangible to discuss with regards to what it looks like for both the actives and the retirees. You know, I, I have an understanding of the history. I have an understanding of what's been, what has and has not been done with this plan. And right now, I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Knox, do you have any questions this evening?
Just out of curiosity, can anyone talk about why DMTRS was started? Like what the, kind of the philosophy was? And then I guess a second would be if this was a trend in other public school districts? Like, how has, have we looked to see how others have handled this? Has there been any of that context that's available anywhere else?
I'll just share that back in the day, and somebody, if somebody has more history than I do, please feel free to share. Public entities had, had retirement plans that were specific to that organization, like DMTRS. When IPRs was initiated, I think the idea was to capture all of those public entities. And with very few exceptions, in fact, I only know of two, Des Moines Waterworks and Des Moines Public Schools, was the choice made within those organizations to participate in IPRs, but also maintain their individual kind of homegrown pension option. I can't really speak to the why behind that, except to say that that shift, for whatever reason, was not made by Des Moines Public Schools or Des Moines Waterworks. Several years ago, Des Moines Waterworks did make a shift to IPRs. It's been a few decades now, I believe. And so we're kind of the lone wolf out there now.
Ms. Knox, anything else?
Thank you. Thank you to everyone.
I'll go to DeWanna Bradley. Any questions?
I just have a couple, but I would like to echo what Ms. Martorano said. I believe I'll have more once we have that presentation and recommendation from the firm that we're utilizing. But I may have missed it, but do we have a timeline of when we will get something presented to the board and some recommendations from this Trusted Capital Group?
Kathy, can you respond to that, please?
Yes, they will have a draft to us of the first initial model that we're going to be using to look at the income replacement by the end of February. And then we hope to have something in April. But they did state that they want to make sure they do it right rather than do it quickly. So that, you know, they're cautiously optimistic that they can have something in April, but cannot guarantee that at this point in time.
Thank you for that. And then I have another question. With the actives that we currently have, I see in the presentation, you said there were 151 actively employed, 296 actives. Do we have a breakdown of how many of those are near retirement? Have, do we have that information?
I do. I have 24 that are over age 60, 24 between the ages of 55 and 60, 48 between 50 and 55, 35 between 40 and 50, and eight that are below 40.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that information. Ms. Caldwell Johnson, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Ms. Norris, we'll go to you next.
Thanks. Just to follow up on the question with regards to timeline, and this may be a question for our board chair, for Superintendent A. Hart. Can you explain to me how this, this decision-making process is syncing up with a budget process in terms of timeline?
Yeah, I can certainly weigh in. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Dr. A. Hart.
No, go ahead, Terry. We have, we have just discussed this. We're really pressing to have it aligned as closely as possible. As Kathy shared, and I'll just go into a little bit more detail. You heard a little bit about the complications of the program in that there is, there is not a one-size-fits-all. So TCG is actually having to go through every individual as a, as an individual case and then combine those figures. And then any solution that we would have likewise also impacts each individual differently. So it's, it's quite complex. We think we'll have much clearer information, at least in terms of a, of a rough dollar figure here by the end of this month. What that final solution might look like is, is going to have to wait a little bit. They certainly appreciate the urgency that we have because they know that we certify our budget in the middle of April. And they know that as much as possible, we want to be able to have that incorporated into the budget decisions that the board needs to make prior to that time.
Great.
And Terry, sorry, I didn't mean to step on your, your comments there.
No, not a problem. You actually said it much more eloquently than I would have. But yeah, I think our desire was to work to ensure that this process, as it played out, lined up with our budget process. To the extent that it can, we'll certainly press in that direction. But I think there's a likelihood that all of the things that we need to know to really make an informed decision may or may not align back to the timeline that's established for our budget. And so the other thing that I would just lift up as well, and I think Kathy mentioned this earlier, but any changes to this plan that we would consider would have to be a general fund expenditure. So the priorities that we set as a board will need to line up in a way that allows us to think through and think about any financial ramifications that might come as a result of making changes to this plan and how it then plays out in our budget process. So to the extent that we can get through this and feel comfortable and confident that we have the right information upon which to make budgetary decisions, I think that we will press in that direction. But we certainly don't want to in any way minimize the importance of this as it relates to our ability to get to the right decisions, ones that make sense, but also those that align back to our fiscal constraints as they exist today.
Thanks. My second question is around, and this is a history question, the governance model that surrounds DMTRS. So there's an advisory committee. My sense is that they make recommendations and there's members, whether it's retirees or actives. But what is the, is there any expectation that the advisory committee polls its members and provides consensus guidance to us? Is that a governance expectation? I'm just trying to understand the governance structure of DMTRS.
I might defer to Jessica on that. She's been on the committee for as long as I can recall, so.
Yeah, thank you. So we do have representatives of the actives and the retirees, three and three. And then we do have community members that also serve on the advisory committee. While we do not have a formal polling structure where we are required to poll, unless we're looking for contribution increases, in which case we've had to take a vote to see if we wanted to do that. In other areas, we have only relied on our own internal polling and motivations of people who are on the, on the advisory board to ask our constituents that we're representing. So I know, for example, Blake has been very consistent in making sure that everyone understands that meetings are going on and this is what we're talking about. And then our retirees have always been well-represented at meetings. And when we have our annual meeting, it's almost always our retiree population that shows up at those annual meetings and participates in asking questions and having those discussions. Certainly, in 2013, when we had our annual meeting, we had a really big turnout of our active members too because of the 2011 change. And so, but we don't have a polling structure built in. However, we do try to ask those questions and we do seek input through emails for our active employees. Barb, do you want to talk about how you can talk with your retirees?
I have a minimal list of retiree members. They are, I have about emails that have been given to me. And so I communicate with those people whose contact information I have. I don't have all 800 people because they're no longer employed in the district. And my understanding is they would have to voluntarily give me their email. I can, the district cannot give me that information.
Thanks, and I think.
And I would just add that, I would just add, sorry, Ms. Norris, that the representatives, though, are elected. That's correct, right, Barb and Jessica? You're in your position because you've been elected by those that you represent. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
That is correct.
And I don't know if TMD or if, for any of these changes, are any of these changes going to require a vote? And, and if so, Dr. Gogarty, you're saying no? Because it's likely not a contribution issue?
Well, we vote if we, if we need the employees to change their contribution level. We don't necessarily vote for employer contribution levels. We don't have control over that.
Great, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Norris?
Well, it's a third question. Should I ask it or wait?
I think you can go ahead.
Okay. The third question, and I don't, again, this may be an apples-to-apples comparison, but on the slide that was provided by Kathy McKay, it was Slide 4, it talked about the, the alignment, the DMTRS alignment between IPRs. And, you know, I think the point was it's never been equal. And so, but I'm wondering if a fair way to look at it is whether or not, should the delta remain the same? remain the same so that as the number of the percentage for IPERS has changed in terms of contributions, that the DMTRS contribution should change as well? Is that a fair way to look at the equity of that or not? And I hope I'm explaining the question okay.
Kathy?
I think looking at that delta area would be a fair way to look at that comparison, knowing that the contributions were different from the beginning, but have they continued to remain consistent within that difference?
And again, I'm just looking at different ways to look at the data to figure out the question around equity and fairness. So thank you.
I'm going to go in the room again to see if there are any questions, Ms. Martorano.
Hearing that Des Moines Water Works was in a similar situation, do we know what steps they took to transition their actives and retirees to IPERS or what that plan looked like when that transition occurred?
We don't have a lot of clarity around that. We do know that we sort of piggyback on the law that was passed to allow them to do that, and we got it modified back in 2013, whatever year that was, to allow us to do the same thing. I do know, though, that the employee group that Des Moines Water Works was serving was much smaller and that at the time, and I don't know how Des Moines Water Works planned, I don't know what it looked like relative to DMTRS, but the overall investment required to make that shift was dramatically less than what we're facing with DMTRS. But that's as much detail as I can provide.
Dr. A. Hart, I can provide that input if you would allow me to.
Certainly, Doug, yeah. Please.
I dealt with the Water Works pension, and how they did it was they fully funded the Water Works port of it and then froze all of the accruals and service credits and had everybody start from a zero vesting years in IPERS. And so they just essentially froze everything as it was, and then on a July 1, started as essentially brand-new employees in IPERS for all of their employees and had to wait the seven years for accrual.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Anything else?
I just want to revisit that timeline again. End of February, we are receiving a draft. Is that of Phase One and Phase Two or just Phase One? I feel strongly that we need to review this as a full plan for retirees as well as for actives. And if there's a February date and then an April date, does that include both Phase One and Phase Two?
The February date was for a draft of the first model in Phase One. It's not for a full proposal for Phase One. It's just for a model for us to start looking at different ways to address the income replacement levels and start those conversations. So it will not be for Phase One and Phase Two, and it, again, just a draft of the model.
So in April, or that kind of target date of April, it will just be Phase One? We will not have anything to discuss regarding Phase Two, which is the retirees?
That is the current plan with the consultant, yes.
Ms. Knox?
No additional questions at this time.
Ms. Bradley, do you have any additional questions?
No, no additional questions from me.
Ms. Norris?
I would just like to ask a clarifying question around communication because I'm sure other school board members and Kathy probably as well are hearing from all different types of members of DMTRS. And it seems as though some are more easily communicated with than others. And I'm trying to understand if there is a way to make sure that everybody has access to the same information in real time. And I'm curious what the barriers are to that and if that's anything that DNPS could be doing to better make sure we're communicating with all plan members about the changes. Is that a fair request?
The Des Moines Teachers Advisory Committee does have an access point out on the board docs because it's a board committee, so we could put some question-and-answer information out there and then send that information of how to access that board doc site to all actives and retirees.
Can I also add that we do have, we do have other mechanisms, too, like we do have to take a vote. So we've been able to, you know, hard mail out ballots that way. And then we also have our annual meeting. So we do have a way of communicating when we have to really push it out to everybody that we're having an annual meeting coming up. And usually we do that through multiple ways of contacting people. We do a snail mail, we do email, and then we do some direct conversations amongst networking within the community. So there's lots of ways that we try to do it when we try to get it out there, but because some of our retirees do not have the same technology that our actives have, it's harder to communicate with all of our retirees.
That's a great point. The last question I just ask is, are we no longer taking membership for DMTRS? That no longer happens, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, as of 2020, I think is July 2020, yeah.
Correct.
Ms. Norris, anything else before? I just have a couple of quick questions I'd like to ask, too, so.
No, thank you.
Anybody else in the room have any additional questions?
Who made the determination or has made the determination in the past of what the employer contribution would be to DMTRS?
Well, historically, when IPERS had a change, then we would look at what we would do with DMTRS. But when the legislature changed the rules and wrote in laws where they really defined what that contribution rates will be for the employers, DMTRS was not able to keep up with that. There were some rules and some laws that prevented us from changing our contribution rates and other things that made it more difficult. So we were able to get some of those laws changed. We were able to get some pieces there, and it took a couple of years. So while at the end, you look at that, at the slide that Kathy made, you say, yeah, these contributions are, you know, they're not that far off, yes. But when you're talking about years of difference of those rates, it does make a difference when you compound it like that, when it compiles. So that's, I don't know, that's the best answer I can give. Someone have a better answer?
But ultimately, was that recommendation coming to the board? Was that the CEO? Was that the superintendent? Was it a board decision?
The advisory, the DMTRS advisory board would make a recommendation to the school board, and then the school board would act on that or not.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of just really basic questions just to help me better orient myself to the DMTRS plan. It feels super nuanced. And so by virtue of that, it's certainly not anything that I'm familiar with. I'm a IPERS member and actually starting to get my payout already. So that notwithstanding, though, I think when I talk about this notion of DMTRS being nuanced, I want to go to the comment or the component of the plan that speaks to the age-based contribution schedule. And is that something that's baked into like the covenants of the plan or the requirements of the plan? Or help me understand what flexibility exists around how contributions are made and how that piece of the plan sort of plays out?
The contribution schedule is part of the plan document, and in order to make any changes to that contribution schedule, the plan document would need to be modified.
I have to imagine that because of the way the plan is structured, and I can remember being, I think, like in a audit committee meeting years ago when we were talking about DMTRS, and there was a whole discussion about the morbidity table and how that plays into the stability of the plan and how that really helps define what latitude and flexibility we have. But I think my question really goes to our ability to change the plan documents in a way that gives us either greater flexibility or an opportunity to recognize how we remedy some of the challenges that have been described. So, I mean, do we have that latitude? If so, what does that look like? I certainly don't want to open up Pandora's box. I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, how far, how deep, you know, where we can go to at least figure out what relief might look like.
Terry, I think there are some opportunities for us to do some plan amendments and plan changes to the plan document. We've had some differing legal opinions on what that might require on our behalf. Some of that, some of the opinions have said that we need to go then to the IRS for a determination letter to make sure that our plan is still in compliance. And doing that step is very time-consuming. And when I say time-consuming, I'm thinking the last we were told is probably a couple years out to get a letter determination. So that puts a little bit of that into context.
Is Terry on mute?
I apologize. Thank you, Jackie. Is that part of the consultant's scope of work to help us understand any plan document changes or other things that might allow us to think about ways that we level set moving forward?
At this point, Terry, I'm not sure that that's in their original scope of work, but it's certainly something that, as our conversations continue, might become a point of conversation for us.
Thank you. And then I know Kathy, you mentioned earlier a little bit about the changes that took place as we were hoping to negotiate moving our actives to IPERS and going from an $11 million to a $17 million hit. Can you put into context whether or not a migration to IPERS for our actives and DMTRS is still something that either could or should be pursued, or is that door closed? Or does it still make any sense at all? Because I feel like that's a real big point, as I've read through all of the emails that we've been receiving. And it appears that people feel like that's the direction in which we're headed. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that as an option that's in front of us right now.
In my conversations with TCG, that is not an avenue that we are currently exploring is to move everyone to IPERS with those service credits. We are looking more at the income level replacement than to move them. Also, in my conversations with IPERS, IPERS was not even willing to entertain those conversations at this point in time. They've had some change in administrative structure and some change in some systems and technology, and they weren't even willing to entertain those discussions until at least April of this year.
Thanks. I think that's a really important point to raise because I want to make sure, at a minimum, if there's anything that we can dispel tonight in our discussion, I want to make sure we do that. And that was one of the big things that I kept hearing but wasn't necessarily agreeing with in some of the communications that I was receiving. So thanks for that clarification.
Just a quick, Madam Vice Chair, just a clarification on that. So is the IPERS consideration off the table because of their unwillingness to even talk to us until April and some technology changes? Or, and that doesn't meet the timeline that we're on? Or, I'm just trying to make sure I understand why IPERS is not in consideration? And maybe I missed that. Is it a, like a logistics and timing issue or a, they just don't want to deal with us?
I think primarily it's because we are confident that the price tag of shifting our current folks over is prohibitive. I'm not saying, however, that, you know, over time, there might not come a time when some actives transition in. But as Jessica illustrated to some degree earlier in the discussion, these decisions are really almost down to an individual person. And for instance, if somebody, as Doug pointed out with Des Moines Water Works, if somebody shifted from DMTRS, had their assets frozen in DMTRS, and then became an IPERS employee, they're not fully vested until seven years. And obviously, seven years means very different things depending on where you are in your career trajectory. So I'm not saying that some of our actives might not ultimately end up an IPERS employee, but as a holistic solution, that's not going to be viable.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I was going back and looking.
I can't hear you, Terry.
Right.
I think she went offline, so we're going to get her back on.
Sorry, I got bumped off the line. My comment, Jackie, to your point was that even if you go back and look at the demographic information that Kathy provided earlier, where 90, what is it, 96 of the 296 actives are 50 years of age or older. When you think about that seven-year vesting, that just really sort of eliminates their ability to even be viable moving forward into IPERS unless they were willing to give us another 15, 20 years of employment, so.
Well, I'm sure Dr. Gogarty is going to be around that long, right? But thank you for explaining that to me. I appreciate it.
I have one other, just really quick question. And this really goes to sort of the mechanics of our investment strategy. We have an investment manager that actually is responsible for managing the portfolio, the DMTRS portfolio, correct? And I think that's Bankers Trust. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And when we did the changes to the investment policy back in 2020, and to Jessica's point, you know, we don't have a lot of variability and we can't just, you know, play the stock market to our benefit just because of the covenants of the agreement and the fact that we really need to protect our investment, not only for the interest of the retirees but the actives that want to get to that point. But are there any other nuanced things that we could think about or do from an investment perspective? Or have there been any other recommendations that have come from Bankers Trust that might allow us to maximize the investment without in any way jeopardizing the corpus of the fund?
Yeah, we've done a couple of things. We've done a couple of things, like we've changed the rating that we allow. It used to be you had to like be, what, double A+ or triple A+ in order for us to invest in. That didn't give us always the best returns. So we now still have all good quality bonds in our portfolio, but they can be rated, what, B+. So that helps. We changed the way that we mix those investments. So it used to be like 80% of it had to be in bonds, but now we can change that to a different, was it 60% or 70% now? 70?
70.
70% now. So, and we've discussed that, you know, quite extensively. And we've done a number of studies with our managers about how can we maximize these investments without jeopardizing the stability of the fund for our retirees, and also because the school district is liable for our retirees. So we didn't want to put the district in a bad way either. So we've been very thoughtful about how can we maximize our returns. Some of our bonds are quite old, and they had very good returns because we bought them, you know, in the 80s and 90s. And so they were, they had really great returns. But those are now aging out. They're sunsetting, they're concluding. And so the bonds that we can buy now don't have nearly this return rate that we once had. So we have some real concerns about what does that look like for us. I don't know if that helps. But yeah, we've been having a lot of discussions about that, trying to figure out what is the way to maximize our income gains, not only for the benefit of the actives but also for the retirees, because their excess earnings are determined by the performance of the fund every year. So if we perform well, they get a little bit more excess earnings, which is actually helpful to offset the shortfall and the difference between what they would get if they were an Ipers employee and a DMTRS employee. But, you know.
Thank you for that, Jessica. Really, I really appreciate that. You know, I think that-
Could I interrupt and make a quick comment?
Can I? Certainly. I'm not sure who's speaking.
This is Blacksmith. I'm, I can see all of you. I don't know if you can see me or not, and that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Blacksmith.
My little, my little investment guy about a month ago, and I was telling you that we were doing, you know, 70/30, up to 70 or 30% equities. And he said, well, that's pretty conservative. I said, well, it used to be even more so. So maybe we ought to take a look at gambling a little bit more. I mean, yeah, you know, it goes up, it's going up nicely, but of course it could go down too. So just an idle thought. So I'll get off now.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, I think if we all had a crystal ball and could predict what was going to happen with the markets, we'd all be really rich people about now. So just one other, just general comment, and I've sort of been thinking about this a lot. I mean, you know, there's really no comparison between Ipers and DMTRS. I mean, we're talking about a huge system that supports hundreds of thousands of state municipal and school district employees versus a program here in Des Moines that supports, what, 840 retirees and 296 actives. So to even be able to draw the comparisons across the plans, you know, is difficult because we're talking about a plan that is significantly larger and by virtue of just the scale of the plan, there are some things that you can accomplish there that just are not going to be accomplished here. But I do think that anything that we could do, and Kathy, I'm hoping that we can talk about, you know, plan documents and things that we can modify and change in places where we might be able to sort of, you know, work around the edges to begin to address, you know, this question of equity and how we, we're never going to be equal. I just don't think that's going to happen. But are there ways that we can be more equitable in how we consider the DMTRS plan and what that looks like moving forward? So I, like the rest of my board colleagues, I'm very interested in hearing from the consultant. I know that Kathy will keep us fully and completely apprised, but I would definitely, you know, lean on our advisory board to, you know, think way outside the box and to feel like, you know, we're going to listen and we'll be open. But obviously, you know, our constraints are fiscal, and we have to take that into consideration. But I think anything that we can do to at least understand where we might have some opportunity, I think is where we'd be willing to go and have further discussions. So before we conclude, I'm going to go around the table one more time and then ask my board colleagues any other questions. Ms. Knox?
I don't have any other questions, but I'm really glad you summed it up with that because I think that's how I feel. I want to know what the consultant says, but I really appreciate a unified perspective from the leadership of DMTRS as well. And so I think we're getting a lot of emails. I'm sure there's a lot of people that have their own personal opinions that are a part of the plan, but that sure would be helpful if there was some thought from the leadership of the group around what are opportunities and bringing that forward as well.
Ms. Martorano?
Nothing further at this time.
Ms. Bradley?
There's nothing further from me. Ms. Caldwell Johnson, I just want to thank you for facilitating this evening as I am a little under the weather. So I appreciate being able to lean on you and guide us through this conversation this evening. So thank you.
Ms. Norris?
Thank you so much. I think the only recommendation or ask, and I'm assuming this is what TMD with the consultant will do, is if, when we look at the fiscal constraints, understanding that one year is not going to solve this issue. My assumption is that there is a plan that is, whether it's three, five, 10-year, that is guiding us throughout the next several years, I mean, whatever recommendation that they're providing us. If that's a, if that's a, if that's not a safe assumption, if I could just share that I think that will be really important in how to look at this.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Dr. Aheart, any final comments to share with the group?
No, just, I just want to reiterate. I know that this board is dedicated to making this as an equitable solution as possible, and I think what Ms. Norris said is absolutely going to be the case. We're not going to have a complete and final clean break at the end of this fiscal year. It will be almost assuredly a multi-year process, but we really do need to come up with a solution for everyone. And just to reiterate to all of our DMTRS members, both actives and retirees, there's clear understanding of how important this is to everyone. And the time that it's taken to get to this point was not time wasted, but just delving into a very unique circumstance that all of us want to bring to a clear resolution. And to echo what Ms. Knox said, the more, the more that our retirees and actives can provide clarity in their shared opinions, the easier it's going to be for us to reach a resolution that everyone finds satisfactory.
Thank you, Dr. Aheart. People in the room for any final comments. Abarb, anything else you'd like to share? Jessica?
I just really appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion. Thank you so much for listening and for helping us try to solve it.
Ashashank, anything from you this evening before we close out?
No, thank you. I think we have had a great discussion here, points from both ends. Don't want to be repetitive. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Kathy?
You have the last word tonight. Thanks, Terry. I just wanted to thank everybody. I want to thank the board for coming together and listening and taking this opportunity to learn more about the plan and the interests of the participants and the retirees. I want to thank the retirees and the actives for voicing their opinions and talking to us and being open and willing to have those discussions. And the last thing I want to do is really to focus on the advisory committee and the efforts and the passion that they have put into this. They've expended a lot of energy, and I really appreciate that. Without everybody's work in this, we're not going to find a resolution. So I applaud you guys for all of your work. I also, Terry, will keep everyone apprised of the TCG study. I'm committed to being very persistent with them and following up, and I will communicate with you guys regularly to let you know the process of that study.
Thanks, Kathy. Appreciate it. And thanks, everybody who participated and joined us this evening. I'm going to give you a few minutes back. I love being able to give the gift of time. So you have five minutes back this evening. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. For those of you that are on the call, that are on the advisory committee, I'll see you tomorrow afternoon. Thanks, everyone. Take care.